All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at this time before Rodney runs out the door. Rodney, would you mind doing a moment of prayer, please? Everybody's standing.
Father, we thank you for giving us this evening an opportunity for you to administer to your children here in Higgins County. We ask for your guidance and your blessings on our local leaders and our state leaders. We ask for a double blessing on our federal leaders because they need all the help they can get. And we just ask you to watch over us all this evening. Again, we bless, thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve your children. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
While we're standing, I do want to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Have you seen it? Ms. Lisa, where are you at? There you are. Item number four under amendments to the agenda, we would like to add item C under action items, which is an ACCG amendment to the defined benefit plan documents.
We amended a, the horseshoe bond to do with how the payments were ever once they were out of bounds.
All right.
And I know that we talked about it, but I couldn't find where it was written, so I'd like to put that in the pen as a form of vote. So we talked about that was where, since it was being a straight amplification, it was, it was, it was a very strange amplification that the county had to work with to pay. So there, the development board and the vendor have all signed off on this. And we talked about it, and I thought y'all, if the chairman has executed it, and I thought bigger than her, I'm not going to fight it.
Okay.
We did one in June on the two papers to change the date on it, and this is a different one, this is on the horseshoe, in how we, how we amortize the payments. And basically what we're doing is, is putting all that in session.
Okay. All right, we have, have two amendments to the agenda. What is y'all's pleasure?
I think the motion will be approved.
Have a move to approve?
Second.
A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, thank you. That brings us down to item number five under employee recognition. At this part of the meeting, we normally turn this over to Ms. Denny, and she's been handling this the whole time. And we thank her very much for this. And Ms. Denny, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to honor our longtime employees. Do we have Tanya Parks here? Come around a little. Congratulations for 20 years, folks, 20 years. Well, she's been with mine, one, one, all of those years, the entire time. So you've seen a lot of changes. What about you went from two commission chairs to, yeah, two or three? Okay, two or three. Who's counting? Okay.
Now, one, one, we should have the crank phone. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's kidding.
Thank you. All right. All right, under the consent agenda under item number six, retired educators' day proclamation. I got that in here. Did a proclamation on, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday, wasn't it? On retired educators' day, which is coming up Sunday, November 1st, 2020, is retired educators' day in Georgia. We did a proclamation and read it to the, to the retired teachers under the Zoom media, which is another story. But anyway, worked out very well, and we're going to go ahead, and that is under the consent agenda. All right? That brings us down to old business. The, under old business, employee handbook updates. Ms. Paula, can you give us a quick read or digest review of the updates for the hand, for the county handbook?
There's a few updates to different things about just cleaning up some stuff. There is one update on page seven, adding to the equal employment opportunity plan.
Right.
That our liability insurance have asked we add that on there. And just a few, what's in blue is the updates. The black is already in there. And it's to clarify some different things about comp time and bereavement pay and add the code of ethics for county government. I wanted to put that, include that in the handbook. And then I give y'all another page to look at, see if I want to add it on there.
Yeah, I think, I think the other thing is the one that she had put in. I think y'all have reviewed all these others other than that one at that time.
Is that the one, Paula, we talked about where if somebody runs for office, they need to take a leave of absence? Is that, I have a question or two about that. Let's see. So they would actually retain, you know, retirement and all of that if they take a leave of absence, correct?
Yes, as long as they determine they're employed.
Okay. So if they just took it as a leave for, say, three months or six months or?
Yeah, the one this actually reads from the time they actually request them writing, they request them writing, and then it would be from whenever they go to the county registrar's office and have the official sign up to do it.
And I know you did some homework on this. Which, did you say you have maybe 50/50 of the other counts, surrounding counties, that some have this in effect and some do not?
Well, I couldn't say exactly 50/50, but I did check, and I don't have it right in front of me, but some counties do. And this, this actual stuff, I know Dawson County has this in their handbook.
So the way that I read in here is the way they have it, correct?
So once this is approved, I'm assuming that once this is approved, this is going to affect January 2nd. Make sure.
Well, as of this meeting, I would think if it's according to the handbook, that's something we'll just have to get a great issue of it.
All right. Mr. Barnes, you got any questions? We discussed the majority except for that last paragraph. I want to be sure we had that out in the open. Ms. Denny, you got any other further questions?
Okay, let me ask one more on this. Is this saying that if somebody declares their candidacy, they have to take the leave of absence? They don't actually have an option on that, am I right?
If an officer resigns or submit a request and write, the county chairman or appropriate elected official for a leave of absence. That's the way I read it, because of the behavior.
I do. Do you got any?
Any questions?
The question I've got is the, we've got numerous elected officials. Now, we all know that under, under some regs, that even though the county commissioners will do a proposed county handbook to govern the whole, whole county and their employees, does it not mandatory for the elected officials to go by that handbook? Is that correct? That's still, that's still true?
They can opt in. They can opt in if the chief of the board commissioners does not have the control. Other than setting the budget, you have no control over how they manage their own.
That's true. But, but once you, once the county commissioners approve a handbook, the other elected officials cannot pick and choose when they want to use that handbook, either need to use it or not use it, correct?
You're saying they either have to use us a whole?
Or come up with their own guidelines.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I'm just trying to, trying to lay it out there on how, what it can be done. So I guess what I'm asking is, if this gets approved tonight, it'll probably go into effect first of December or tomorrow? What are y'all, what are y'all looking at? Or, Mr. Landem, you got any? Any questions on that part?
One thing you could do, if you're in trouble with this table, this, if you go ahead and adopt the ones that ACCG has recommended, and table this for protocol consideration, and you're actually, if you want to.
Can you take it out, that horseshoe?
Just, yeah.
Bring it back to the next voting session? That's a good idea.
And then if you go ahead and, these, the other ones, we really don't, I mean, we don't really have much control from those.
Right, right. Any other questions or comments as we go forward?
No, I might be best to talk to someone else.
Okay. The recommendation is to accept the ones that ACCG is strongly recommending for us to add to the handbook. Other than that, any new, new and above literature to that point would be put on hold until we have more time to review it.
You're basically, you're monitoring, you're taking the recommendations down for all, except for you're preserving this, the one that title seeking elected office, that one is not being adopted, the rest of them are.
All right. Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct.
So in speaking in Dawson County, they have that for the ones the commissioner supervises? It's not like the other elected officials are not included in that, am I right?
I can actually, I'll actually check on that for you.
Yeah. Maybe I should type those.
All right.
Paul, it has to be, Paul, Paul.
All right, what is, what's y'all's pleasure to accept or deny?
To accept it with that one paragraph taken out.
That's correct.
I'd like to make sure you do that.
Make the move for that one?
Yes.
A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye. No opposed, thank you. Bring this down to item number eight under new business, safety coordinator resolution. Paula, would that be you again?
Yes. It's my understanding that the county already has this resolution, but this is, again, a part of our safety discount. And this time, they've asked for a few more things, and they wanted us to update this resolution. We have to have this in place to be able to get that safety discount for our workers comp.
Whoever comes, okay.
Do we hold those meetings here, or do they do this online?
Like the safety meetings? Kim Jarvis is now the safety coordinator, and she, she works with the other departments. And they each have, they have departmental meetings, and then once a quarter, they have like a committee meeting.
And we do, we do go up to the departments and do that, and then we do it online also. And then we have some meetings downstairs for that also. I need a move in a second to approve.
So maybe.
A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye. No opposed, thank you. That brings us down to prepayment of property taxes. Prepayment of property taxes. Let's see. Mr. Reeves, or Fay Harvey, or anyone want to talk on that and be sure the public's aware of what, what they're proposing?
Well, the prepayment of taxes, it stems from the Senate bill 216 from a couple of years ago, which is basically allowing for people now to pay in advance toward their taxes. It's like an escrow, where they can pay at their convenience from the beginning of the year to the time that the taxes are due. And then when the bill comes out, we then apply what they have paid toward it to the bill that's there.
What if there's a, what if they overpay their taxes? Do they get, does that money go back on their taxes for the fall, for the next year?
We would either, we would probably leave it up to the, to the customer. We could apply it back to the next year and say, you know, you can put that forward to the next tax bill and go ahead and continue to put into your, your account. Or it could be a refund. I think the bill, you know, specifies that it doesn't, we don't, you know, it doesn't have to be a refund, but, but that's, I think we would probably leave it up to the individual, how they want to manage their own money in that account.
The payments that they can do, is that, is that qualified through the, by the tax? Because they paid the previous year, and they divide it by 12, or how, how do you come up with a figure?
They would actually pay into it as they, they desire to pay into.
Okay, so it's nothing that they have to sign up and pay, pay a fee once, once a month?
Right, right. It's not something we're going to draft or anything like that.
And it could be any amount of money whatsoever?
It can be. They can decide to pay 300 one month, 100 the next, but, you know, it just, it depends on that, because they're actually, they're paying into it before it's due. So there's actually not a bill, so there's, it's not like a savings.
It's not a post-payment account, it's a prepayment account.
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right. Y'all got any, any questions?
Your system will track that, right?
Well, we're going to have, we'll basically have to do that as like a separate thing. We'll have to, have to have a separate account for that, so that we're.
So you will hold it as an escrow account, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Ms. Landem?
I was ready, I was ready for that. It's like, it's segregated in a separate account. It would not go into the general fund until the tax bill is issued and, and the general fund.
That would be a bunch of money.
Yeah. All right. And you need a, you need a, an approval from the commission board to proceed with that?
Correct.
I make a motion to proceed with it.
A move in a second to proceed with that particular request. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye. No opposed, thank you. All right. Very much. Is there anything we need to sign this commission board to go ahead and activate that, Daniel?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything we need to do at this commission board to activate that, or?
We'll have to sign a resolution and allocate it.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, at this time, it brings us down to item number nine under finance report. At this time, we're going to let Ms. Hardy take charge, if you would, please.
Okay. The report that you all have is for the period ending September 30th, and that is nine months or 75% of our fiscal year. For, for the revenues, through the end of September, we had collected 15,221,948, and that's slightly over 50% of our budgeted revenue. For the expenditures in the general government functions, we have spent $2,772,270, and that is 66.48% of the budgeted amount. In the, in the judicial functions, through September, we have spent $2,470,801, and that's 64.88%. In public safety, the expenditures are $10,240,959, and that is 70.39%. And then we go to the public works. The expenditures through, through the end of September in public works are $4,840,246, and that is 87.16. That is over the allowable budget. But the, the road, or the maintenance shop, and the recycle center, both have large amounts of their budgets that are capital items. And those capital projects have been completed. I don't think there would be a problem with the rest of the year with their operational. It looks like they, they shouldn't be over budget. The budget should level out by the end of the year. We'll have to keep a check on that, though. In health and welfare, the health department senior center and the MATS program, the expenditures are $115,592, and that's 40.29% of the budget. For culture and recreation, expenditures are $751,600, and that's 69.83%. Housing and development, the expenditures are $514,026, and that's 62.38%. So the total general fund expenditures through the end of September are $21,705,494, and that is 71.7%. For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditures are $1,699,837, and that is For the airport, the expenditures are $495,312, and that's 96% of that expenditure budget. The airport revenues through the end of December are $513,860. So actually, they are basically in the black. That budget is going to be a revenue and expenditure adjustment by, by the end of the year. We're normally waiting till December to do that.
Okay.
And that's mostly from fuel sales. They're, they're selling a lot of jet fuel and aviation fuel. So the, the line item budgets were distributed to department heads and elected officials on October 9th, and I have copies of those line items if you ever wish to see those. Any questions?
You were, you were working on, I'm sorry, you're working on budgets. The, have you got any outstanding, any budgets that are, that haven't been brought in yet?
I have one elected official, but this attorney doesn't have any for budgets yet. But that's the only one that I'm liking right now.
All right.
And the, the budget meetings, I put a copy of the schedule in your book, like, so I have an additional copy. We were going to discuss those dates earlier, but that, that is the 27th, 28th, 29th, I believe. It's, it's in, it's in two weeks, at the end of October, is when you will have those. And any questions about the finance report?
Anything on the quick?
Good job.
Roger.
Okay, I did put an additional packet into your, in your budget report, and it was a request for an amendment to the general fund budget. Two of the revenue items is the reimbursement for damaged property, and that was a fire truck that was damaged. That's $155,521. We already received that revenue, and that needs to be budgeted as reimbursement for damaged property on the revenue side and for, in the fire department repairs line on the expenditure side. And also, the fire department received a, an ACCG grant for safety supplies, that was $8,500, and that needs to be budgeted in the, as revenue for the fire department and also as a expenditure for supplies, which they can purchase with that grant. The large amount on the, on the budget amendment is $1,454,637, and that is the cares funding. And we received those funds. It was federal money that was passed down to the states for, for governments with expenditures related to their response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And to be eligible for those cares monies, we could claim public safety payroll, salaries, and benefits for any pay periods after March 20th, and all this had to be turned in by September 1st. So ACCG, and also, if you did not claim all that they had allotted for you, you lost it. So ACCG was working with the counties, and they recommended that the public safety payroll and benefits would be the easiest way really to, to be eligible for all that money. So we, the eligible employees have to be frontline workers, so we used firefighters, EMTs, uniform patrol, and EMF.
And that was, that was a recommendation from the, from the Fed?
From ACCG, yes.
ACCG, that's correct.
Because normally, that would, that would be enough expenditures that we had expended already to meet the criteria. So the uniform patrol division, function 3323, firefighters and EMTs, that's function 3520, and the EMF, function 3920. No admin personnel were, were eligible. So I'm asking that we amend the budget for this revenue, the $1,454,637. And the commissioners with the budget amendment tonight asking to include in the budget amendment hazard pay for the frontline workers that, that gave us really the eligibility to receive the funds, and to show appreciation for their work, because they're dealing, they're still dealing with this COVID-19 on a daily basis. And $2,000 for each employee in those functions in hazard pay, and that will be paid out $500 for the first two payrolls in November and the first two payrolls in December.
The reason why we broke it up that way was to, if we was to write a check for two, we got the money, but if we was to write a check for $2,000, the income tax is going to hit them all pretty hard. So we divided that up in four equal payments to keep the income tax from the state and federal up from being so hard, so rough on them before they'd be able to take a lot of this money home. So it is hazard pay.
So we budgeted the salary, if it's, if it's the expenditure side, we budgeted the salary and also the FICA, the FICA Medicare for the taxes for that. Also, the clerk of court had requested, I think I have that handout in your packets also, the clerk of court is asking for some additional money to index old deeds back 50 years. That, that expedites the, the people who are going through her office, they can exit most things online, and it lessens the traffic through the courthouse. That expenditure budget amendment for her, her budget would be under $25,000. So the total budget amount, the revenue increase and the expenditure increase is $1,618,658.
Excuse me, for Jennifer, did you say 125 or 25?
125.
125.
The indexing for all those years is a little over 122, and she thought she might have some other technical expenditure she would have to use.
All right, any other, any other questions? I need a move in a second to go ahead and approve what Ms. Hardy has put together and worked out for all these monies coming in from the COVID, and what they have done to pull these funds together. I need a move in a second to approve.
Second.
A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye. No opposed, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy, for the work you've done on that. And thank you for the first responders and the, and UPD for putting their lives out there to, for the, for this COVID and what we're having to deal with. The, also, I'd like to make another comment to the fact that getting closer to the end of the year, we got about, not quite two more months, a little over two more months for the end of the year. And at this time, I am, I am pleased to see that, that everybody's really close on budget as we go forward to December. I'd like for Ms. Hardy to go ahead and put a spreadsheet together to the fact that I would like to know, and whoever's going to be the, the new chairman, needs to, before he goes into the first of the year, any outstanding POs or requisitions from any other government officials before they're surprised in January wind up with 200 POs, so it's got to be dated back to 2019. So, Ms. Hardy, I would like to ask if you would put us a spreadsheet, if there's any POs or requisitions out there with any elected official or department heads on POs and all that, that still could be floating out there. And if we happen to come up with something strange, I'd like to have them dated when those things were put out, and why they wouldn't pay to a certain high. I'd like to have that done. And not knowing, again, not knowing who the new administration is, I don't want to have that individual having any surprises as they go forward. And we do not want to have the fact that Ms. Denny, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Stansel, or Mr. Schouse, whichever is going to be in this position, will have a surprise, have to increase the, the military rate next year. Hopefully, that will not be the case. All right. The action items under item number 10, regular meeting on, we need to get an approval of the regular meeting we had on September 17th, 2020. We have the minutes here, and let that get that approved, please.
So maybe to approve the minutes.
A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let them say aye. No opposed, thank you. Item number B, we got a bid approval, airport sewer system improvements. We put that thing out for bids. There's what, four, four or five individuals put that out. Low bid come in.
I think, I think it was about $396, some change.
I think it was about 396, some change.
Yeah. Finished up that lead station. The other ones were so much, and we had all that vetted. Need approval to approve the, the airport sewer system improvements in the, for the lead station, please.
So moved.
A move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. Bring us down to item number C under ACCG amendments to the defined benefit plan. Mr. Landham, is that going to you or Ms. Paula?
When the benefit plan was changed in 2016, it has come up that there was a era when the plan documents were wrote, and it's been administered and presented that way by ACCG. And this amendment is going to correct that era in the plan documents.
So we're going to have to have a move in a second to go ahead. All right. I need a move in a second to approve that amendment to the defined benefit plan, please.
So moved.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. All right. That's going to bring us down to item number 11 under the rezones.
Item D. Item D, that amortization.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go back up. We have a item D under airport bonds and amortization. Mr. Landham, I'm going to turn that, that here.
That, like I said before, that's just the, changing that language in the volume. Portion of the volume that deals with tape and scope interest on the damage bonds. Both the lead rate development, I've told y'all about it, like I said before, I thought we had, I thought we had had it in advance, but I couldn't find it. So I'm going to formally put y'all vote on it. It is, like I said, it's just changing into a structured principle and interest amortization. They have prime, plus whatever. We're not changing actual interest rates, we're just changing how the payment itself is computed.
Okay.
And realize the county still, there is no prepaid penalty on this. So the county never wanted to pay extra cost on it. They could. The way it's structured now, the county was required to, it's difficult for everybody to figure that out, to figure out how that pays.
All right. What's y'all's pleasure on that to approve or disapprove? Move to approve? Have a, have a move to approve. We have a second, move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. All right, now, that brings us down to item number 11 under rezones. The first one we're going to deal with is the rezoning number RZ 82190026. Kelly and Lisa Teal, going from agriculture to rural residential. It was voted on by the planning commission board to unanimously approve with staff recommendations, recommended conditions. I need a move in a second to approve six, six yes, zero no to approve. We have a move to, to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. That has been approved. All right, under the, next one down, RZ 82190027. Planning commission, for the planning commission, it was unanimously approved. It was also six yes and zero no to approve it going from agriculture to rural residential. Partial number 011-037-002. What's y'all's pleasure on that particular rezon for Lisa Teal? Item B.
Item B, Lisa Teal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Have a move to approve. May, may I have a second, please? Have a move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. That brings us down to item C under the planning commission, rezoning number RZ 82190028. Kelly and Lisa Teal went to front of the board. It was also voted six yes and zero no to approve in regard from going from agriculture to rural residential, partial number 011-037-003. What is y'all's pleasure, please?
Moved to accept it.
Moved to accept it?
Second.
Have a move in a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye?
Aye.
Now, folks, thank you. That has been approved. The next one we got. Be sure it's item number D. Item number CU-8-2190029. John Capo on behalf of Claudia Rogers, planning commission unanimously to deny. It was six no, six for no, zero yes to deny. The rezon request at 1115 Stevens View Road. That's on the south end of the Refuge Road, conditional use, personal care home from our area, partial number 053D-076. And it was denied, unanimously denied. What is y'all's pleasure?
I make a motion to deny.
To deny? Got a, got a move to deny?
Check it.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. And then that brings us down to item E. Number RZ-190030, Brian Smith, Henderson Mountain Road, Fairmount, from agriculture to rural residential. Let's see this one, hell. It was six yes and zero no to approve. From agriculture to rural residential, partial number 057-037-001. What is y'all, unanimous approval with staff recommended, recommended conditions. What's y'all's pleasure, please?
Accepted.
Move to accept?
Second.
Have a move in a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being, all the people that ended up saying aye? Now, folks, thank you. That has been approved. All right. That brings us down to guest and comments on the item number 12. Anybody got any comments? Just leave us one more, guys. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all be safe during Halloween. We're going to call this meeting to an end. Y'all have a good weekend and be safe. Thank you very much for being here.